Probably, all the problems are in here.
Mayor!
It's not tourist season yet.
Not too much going on out there. More fun in here. Okay. Let me call the city council meeting to order, please. Seven o'clock, February 28th, the year 2012. Let me welcome everybody who's taken their time out this evening. It's a beautiful evening, but maybe we'll get you out of here quick. I'd like everybody to please rise for an invitation and pledge allegiance. Oh heavenly Father, we gather this evening to serve the city in your name. We strive to do your will in everything we do. Thank you for allowing us to nurture our minds and our bodies while we live within your hands on our beautiful island. We are truly blessed. As we emerge from our winter season, may the spring bring us closer to you. I ask, please, keep safe, all those that keep us safe on this beautiful island. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergman.
Here.
Councilmember Battelli.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Right here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Haltz.
Here.
Thank you. Next to order business, we're going to swear in two of our patrol officers. So first, I'd like to entertain a motion to appointment. Is that moved?
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Hunter, can you meet me down front, or he will meet us there? This is not as painful as going to the dentist.
But good being prepared. Good being prepared.
I, Hunter Laramore.
I, Hunter Laramore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve and protect.
And preserve and protect.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're here. I just want everybody to know, Hunter's moving here with his wife and two sons from Leedsburg, Virginia.
That's where I transferred, yes. He resided in Dorsen.
So you're back.
Eleven years in the Coast Guard, he came home.
Okay. Very well. It says in my notes here that you had five hundred long work with boardings while you were on the board. Yep. That's what ship you used to be on.
No, sir. Never was stationed in Charleston. I was on four different patrol boats and a small boat at a national station.
Wow, wonderful. Well, you probably need your eyes when you've lost the hopes on the beach. You're used to it.
Thank you.
Matt Maloney's going to be sworn in next.
It's good news.
All right. Follow after me. I, Matthew Malone.
I, Matthew Malone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And that I will.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve and protect.
And preserve and protect.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're in. Matt has moved here with his wife and two daughters, two sons, two daughters. West Grove, Pennsylvania?
Yes, sir.
That's southern, east-west?
Southeast.
Southeast.
Where Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania.
Okay. That's up to him, huh?
Yeah.
That's close, I guess. And you were part-time Pennsylvania State Councilman?
Yes.
Very good. Welcome to the team.
Welcome to the court.
Thank you. All right. I know the next item of business, I got doing this with some movement. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Approval of previous meeting minutes? May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 24th? Motion seconded?
Second.
Seconded. Any corrections, additions, deletions? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. We're into the part of our routine here to talk about citizens' comments, so. I know I have one that we're going to bring forward here in a moment. Is there anybody else at the moment that would like to speak to council? None heard? We have before us, and I believe council is aware, that Army Wives would like to do some filming on the island. And in order to approve filming on the island, they have to come forward and address council, speak to the issues, and then satisfy our city administrator and the staff on the details working there on. Steve Yettman is here. He is the locations manager for Army Wives. He's been doing it, he told me earlier, for six years.
Yes, sir. Steven Yettman, Y-E-T-M-A-N. Thank you all for letting me come and get before you this evening. We are in our sixth season of filming here in the Low Country for the TV show Army Wives. Let me say thank you for inviting us and apologize for being so late. Having been here six years, we've been to city, obviously, North Charleston, Solomon's Island, Folly Beach, and I apologize again for taking so long, but.
Save the best for last.
Well, that being said, at least we figured we'd create a good track record before we came through, before y'all. So I look forward for the opportunity to working with Linda and working out some of the details. We're looking to film for a day on the island. There would be some prep work a day or two before, and certainly a day afterwards, to restore and strike, as we called. We're looking at a house down off Ocean. Currently, we're looking at 502. We've kind of picked this house, one, because of the look, and, two, we do want to do some filming on the beach. And being a 30-year resident of the Low Country, I understand how sensitive that can be. We wouldn't be out there all day. We may even split our day between starting maybe at the Windjammer, filming a scene there, and then working our way down to the street. We do have an evening scene that we need to shoot, and unfortunately, with daylight savings, I'm about to shift, it means that we might go as late as 10 o'clock, maybe even 10:30 on a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday night. Having done this before, we will try and make our impact on the island minimal. We'll try and group all our crew cars on a parking lot conducive with the city's needs, or at the county park. We certainly have some flexibility, being this time of the year, not crowded, as it would be later in the season. I also need a little flexibility in some of this, because we're looking, obviously, for a nice day on the beach. And so as we look at this, and we get closer, we look at the Weather Channel and the local forecast to see what day may be best, but our show films for this episode from March 15th to the 23rd. We don't shoot on the weekends. We're Monday through Friday, filming-type show. So that would give us, I think, a Thursday and Friday that first week, and then possibly the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday if we come up to the 23rd. We'll make that decision early on, and we'll be in contact with everybody, with the town, and especially the affected residents in the area. We've already talked to the players, the millmen's, Buddy Darby's office, the Dowdles. Again, we're looking at filming at 502, and I've also had a conversation with Mr. Hammer, who has a property down there as well. We've sent some sort of correspondence off to the Hennessys at 506. I have not yet spoke to them personally, but that will be on our list of things to accomplish here very soon. I'm also talking with OCRM. Obviously, crossing the dune is a sensitive matter, and I've been talking with Bill Iser, who's going to meet us, and make sure that whatever we do, we don't cause a problem for anybody as we try and cross the dune. We would like to have access at the town's crossing, at Fifth Avenue. Permission to go over there? We'll try and coordinate that, obviously, with the police department, and do that in coordination.
Are you talking about vehicles across?
Yes, sir. Some sort of vehicles. We're sensitive to the size of that space. We've been down there studying it to see what can go over, what can't. Again, with OCRM weighing in to make sure that we don't do any, anything down there that would be unsamely to what's built up. And that's going to be our main concern, by trying to get some stuff done there. We may attempt to build a ramp. We've applied for a permit with OCRM to put up a temporary structure of maybe some plywood to try and get some carts and stuff rolled onto the beach.
Yeah, that is, and I was going to get to that.
All right. So we've started the process, but we look to look, we'll look to working with Linda to see what's acceptable, and again, trying to minimize any sort of damage or impact down there. With that being said, I think there are a number of places we're going to try and, again, minimize our impact by putting our cars, crew cars, in a city lot, maybe. Maybe at the county lot, we're looking at, I may be doing some lunch at the Exchange Club, but because they have meetings on Thursday, it's the second and fourth Thursday of the month, I'm looking for a little flexibility there, because I may end up on a day where they have something and I can't use it. I'm also going to be in contact with St. Matthew's Church to see if maybe I can use some of their property down there as well. It is sort of a work in progress, but there are a lot of pieces to put together, but I think there are a lot of options here, depending on what day we pick and what's going on, to make sure that we keep our impact down to a minimum. As we do film the night scene out in front of the house at 502, I think we probably have to close Ocean Boulevard to traffic for about two or three hours while we're actually filming out there. We look forward to working with the city police about either rerouting traffic or doing some sort of intermittent traffic control. And with that, I was wondering if you guys have any questions?
I'm going to ask Linda if she has.
Well, just a couple of comments. That Fifth Avenue access could not be blocked.
Absolutely.
That is an emergency access, so if something happened with you guys and we needed to get down there to you to effect a rescue, you know, or something else happened on the beach, we'd have to be able to get through there, so we could not block that access.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Other thing, and I think Emily has already spoken to you about this, the city would require that you provide us with a certificate of insurance, and we need to be named as an additional insurer, not just a certificate holder.
We'll get you a sample copy to review, and then obviously, as this gets followed, we'll issue the certificate as needed.
And just to refresh council's memory, and for the benefit of the new council members, many of the things that he's talking about doing, we nor, the city does not normally allow on the beach. No commercial activity on the beach, no vehicles on the beach. We, you know, are always mindful of turtles, although you're outside of turtle season. But we can, if this is named as a city-sponsored event, we get a bit of a latitude with regard to these things, so it's a special situation. So what we would need would be for this filming to be, for there to be a motion indicating this filming at this time would be a city-sponsored event.
Okay. Questions? The response from the neighbors down there? How's that been?
Very positive. We've had several people hoping that we'd use their house, and when we picked another one, you know, took them on out. I think a lot of them excited to see what we may or may not do. But it's been fairly positive so far, and positive response from Mr. Darby's office. Alvin Hammer, today we had a nice conversation. He's willing to help us out somewhat as well. And we picked 502, again, being sensitive to having vehicles on the beach. We didn't want to travel too far from that access, which is why we're trying to stay in that vicinity.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone in council? All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to make this filming during the week of 15th through 23rd of March as a city-sponsored event. Is that moved?
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard? We're leaving it up to staff to work out all the details, so. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you all, and maybe you'll come out and see us while we're filming.
Have you checked the tides?
Yes, I have. And just so, Linda, I have been on Folly Beach during the turtle run, and actually, being there actually helped, because we were able to get the turtle lady from Folly Beach out there. She collected up, I believe, 88 turtles.
Oh, nice.
On occasion. Anyway, thank you very much.
Well, we'll try and get the weather right for you, so you're in a better season. Good.
All right, Bobby.
All right. Any other citizens' comments? Very good. Let's move on. Go through the Ways and Means Committee report. We met on seven o'clock on Tuesday, the 21st. We have all present. Councilman Stone was in Columbia doing some good things for all of us, I trust. Whatever you can do in Columbia. We met, our treasurer gave us a report with a target of 58%, meaning that we're seven months through the year of our general fund. While we're behind in our receipts, it's principally due to property taxes, because the county treasurer is behind in processing, and they're running about a month behind, and that's about consistent with what our tables show as far as our receipts. As far as our expenditures, good news is, our expenditures continue to track well below our budget, so if we maintain that track, we'll be well-served from a budget standpoint. Our cash from general fund, at the end of the month, was 22% of our general fund expenses. Again, that's actually an improvement from prior months, so we're moving in the right direction. Relative to our tourism accounts, we received $184,000, excuse me, $184,000 payment in December, December quarter, from the state. That's a significant increase, and part of that is a correction that our treasurer and our administrator were diligent in pursuing from the state doggedly, I would say, over many, many months. Our notes say September 2011, and actually, it's 2010. It took quite a while to get it from them, but they found their error and have made restitution, so that's all good news. So we're currently 31% ahead of where we were this time last year. And state accommodations, municipal accommodations is running at 10% over prior year. The county made a payment to us, which they do twice a year, consistent with our expectations. Hospitality tax is running, actually, behind, but we have some late payers that our administrator and others are diligently pursuing at this moment. So I expect that will be corrected here shortly. We reviewed our beach restoration project, which is coming forward. I didn't do what I said I was going to do, did I?
I know. I haven't been able to think about anything else since you skipped the plan.
I mentioned something to Linda at the outset, and I said, "We ought to do it up front," and then I moved right by it. So I'm right at the beach restoration project and show management, so I'll jump right into it now. We received our core permit.
Yay!
So it's been a long, long thought-out battle. I can't even remember when we applied for it. It could be well over a year ago, but we have had, for a number of months now, permit from OCRM. Now with the core permit, we're permitted to proceed with our beach restoration. In that regard, that's one of the key principal pieces of good news that we can bring forth here. In addition, I'll let Linda announce what the municipal association has done.
We received, right in a very short time span, late this afternoon, we received word of getting the permit, and then just after hanging up the phone on that, two minutes later, we received a phone call from Municipal Association of South Carolina, where our project, the beach restoration project, had been selected for Municipal Achievement Awards. So we're really excited. We'll receive the award in Hilton Head in summer, and this is, I believe, four of these, if I'm counting correctly. Three? Emily's correcting me. I want four. But anyway, we're very excited about it, so, and also, just to remind everybody, tomorrow, Emily and I travel to DC to accept an award on behalf of the city from the American Shore and Beach Protection Association, also for the beach restoration project, and we are one of five in the United States to receive this honor. So I think that, I think that speaks well for everyone that has been involved in the hard work to restore that section of beach and to keep it restored.
And who's going to be there with you to receive this?
Tim Scott has indicated that he will be there to participate in the actual ceremony for, and so cross our fingers that he doesn't get diverted to something else. And Tim Scott was actually, Congressman Scott was actually the chairman of county council during the time that we were putting together the $10 million funding package that funded this project. So it's fitting that he should join us for the acceptance of the award. He will actually present it to us.
Very good. Take a breath, move on. Financially, in good shape on both beach restoration, the Marina dredging is moving along. You'll hear that reported here shortly. The 53rd to 57th drainage project, no significant cost expenditures in that regard. We did, the treasurer went through with us changes we can expect to have to record relative to the year-end financial statements, relative to the South Carolina retirement system. Given that our employees are part of the South Carolina retirement system, we will have a requirement in our financials to report our prior share of any unfunded liability. But we're a small pea in that big pot, but it's just an audit and comment that we will proceed to take note of come year-end financials. Relative to new business, from our Public Works Committee, we had a recommendation for sole sourcing, a contract with Civil Site Environmental in the amount of $169,000 for the design, bidding, and construction, and oversight of the 42nd to 52nd avenues drainage project. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. This is the second project in our drainage initiative, the last one being just finished, 53rd to 57th. And we're now looking at 42nd to 52nd to see how we can move the water in that drainage basin to an outfall somewhere on the island and handle the stormwater issues that are facing residents in that area. So that's a project that will be undertaken. Civil Site Engineering has a civil site environmental, I should say, has a significant history on the island, having done most of the drainage work, not only for the city, but for wild dunes. And this water will have to travel through wild dunes in order to ultimately get to an outfall, so their history and knowledge is going to be very valuable to us here. So we have a motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Moving on. Thank you very much. Next item on the hit list is the award of a contract to A.B. Evans in the amount of $3,900 for the path and pad at the compactor located by the municipal park. I'll make a motion to award this contract?
Second.
Motion seconded. This is a contract near a compactor. The property owners and restaurants, et cetera, that have to use the compactor have a great deal of difficulty, we find, moving through the gravel that's there, moving their goods to the compactor. And this is a way we can, obviously, level the playing field, if you will, and make it easier for them, and reduce the liability for trips involved and any other problems involving. So, motion seconded. Any other discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. From the Real Property Committee, we had an affirmation of the expenditure of $3,000 related to moving the pilings to accommodate the dredging that's going on. This is a, an action that was taken by the administrator with the involvement of Real Property Committee, but hadn't passed through all of council. It was a time-sensitive matter, so I'll make a motion to reaffirm the expenditure of $3,000 for the movement of the pilings.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Certainly.
Where is, where is that coming from? What line item in the budget?
It will be coming out of the contingency in the dredging budget.
How much is that balance?
We had $69,000 in the contingency. We're using $3,000. Okay. Any other questions? None heard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're into award of a contract for the show management project, which we just mentioned. We've now got permitted, so now we can move ahead. The city took bids on February 17th. We had a, I think it was seven, eight, I think it were eight bidders in total that bid the project. The low bidder, which is Baker, did I get the name right?
Baker Infrastructure Group.
Baker Infrastructure Group. In the amount of $250,500 is the low competent bidder, and I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for the show management project to Baker Infrastructure Group in that amount.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? They should be, we should be able to give them a notice to proceed here as soon as we make the award, so. None heard? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Mr. Mayor, just one thing. This is, this is not new money going to this project. It's the reserve of wild, of the funds that were left over from the.
That's, that's.
From the future nervous program that we have to.
We have roughly, from memory, $650,000 in funds.
Correct.
From the, from the other parties involved in the project, and this will consume $250,000 of that.
Correct.
And the permit is good for, do we not have, is it five years? So we have time in the future if we need to. Okay.
Capital pressure.
Okay. That's coming up here. We did have a discussion. All right. Let me move on to it. We considered, made a motion to increase the capital threshold, the recommendation of, well, recommendation of staff was to move, increase it from $1,000. They were proposing something less than $5,000. Our auditor had recommended $5,000, and Councilman Ward said, "Why, I think his phrase was, "Why wouldn't we follow the auditor's recommendation?" Sounds pretty prudent to me. So we have before us a motion to approve a capital threshold increase from $1,000 to $5,000. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Linda to explain this to the public so they understand what this motion really contains.
There really is no change to our way of doing business, except the record-keeping at the, that the city treasurer has to do for capitalizing our equipment. So heretofore, that list has, you know, been everything that the city owns that cost $1,000 or less, which, as you can imagine, is a very, very, very long and unwieldy list. With this action, then that list will be reduced to those things that the city spent $5,000 or more to purchase. It should not change, you know, the information that flows to you all. It is more just a record-keeping change for the functions that she does, depreciation on those items that we need to appreciate and things of that nature. So it's more of a record-keeping change than anything. It just lessens her workload.
Thank you. Any other questions? None heard? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Okay. Moving on. Moving on. We had a discussion about prioritizing the transportation sales tax, funding request. Each municipality to make a request to give, to county priorities for use of the transportation sales tax. They put it into a meat grinder and decide who gets money and who doesn't. In the past, we've been successful, particularly on the drainage project, 53rd to 57th Avenue. And in fact, that next project will be our first priority. That will be 42nd to 52nd Avenue will be our first priority as far as project funding is concerned. Our second priority that we've requested of the county is to, is to fund engineering for bike enhancement from Breach Inlet to 57th Avenue and the entry onto the island, particularly at the connector. This was an action. Do we need to vote on it here or is it, we've already taken action on it?
We submitted the paperwork today.
Okay. So it's not. But for everybody's benefit, those are two priorities. They don't necessarily compete with each other because within the county scheme, there's different pots of monies from which they will have funds available. So we may get one, both, or none funded. But hopefully, they can see the wisdom on both. One is the stormwater management here on an island, which is, which is critical for the properties involved in that area. And the second one, of course, is for the safety of the biking community that visits here on the island, which is a growing population as they travel and traverse the island. So I think everybody can understand why we picked those two in particular.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment, make sure that I'm clear on this. You've already explained it to me, but I'd like the public to know that. We did not, absolutely did not recommend, it's one of our priorities, to put barricades on the connector for bike lanes.
No, no.
Because of phone rings, you know?
Okay.
That's what they saw on the television. Isle Palms, city officials were planning, you know, but not.
No.
Okay.
Well, some of it is not. There was, full disclosure, the county had put together a proposal. They're obviously looking at biking, enhancing biking throughout the county process. There was an initiative, and they came forward and asked us about some thoughts that they had. One of those thoughts was to put barriers and barricades up on the connector. We basically rejected that. And the only option they left with was painting another line down the, I call it breakdown lines. They have somewhat more fancy term for that. So that's the extent that if anything gets done, that's the most that would be done there. Because they're reasonably safe now and for both pedestrian and bikes.
Thank you.
There was some confusion. You are correct. We subsequently started through our budgeting process. This is a water torture exercise we go through over a series of months. Well, call it as it is. First month, we went through all our capital budget requirements, big dollar items, et cetera. Each committee has gone through that. We sat with Ways and Means, and everybody on council had an opportunity to provide input. And we will get, next month, look at the individual budgets by departments, and eventually in April, we'll sit together and go through all of them combined, as well as looking at our revenue to see what we can afford and dependent on what we might like to have. Part of the capital project is actually looking at 10 years, so we can look ahead to see what capital needs are for, for equipment, large equipment, large initiatives by the city, et cetera. So that was a labor that took us two or three hours, I guess. And we had, you know, some insightful suggestions, looking at, for instance, Councilman Buchanan talked about replacing the lighting. Instead of going for a major realignment at the rec center, just getting on with redoing the lighting, which is still needed while we can afford it, as opposed to waiting till we have many more years till we can afford to do a complete realignment. So the staff is looking into that right now, I suspect, so that should work well. So other than that, we've agreed to meet again. Don't have much choice. On March 20th at 5:45. Any questions for Ways and Means?
Well, just one question. Something's bugging me. I was, remember, we were going through the line items, and there was a line item of $15,000 for contingency on the public safety building. And that building was completed over three years ago, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. And is that $3,000, $15,000 specifically for a punch list? Or is it for ongoing maintenance or what? Is the contract been completing, completed? Because that seems like to me an awfully long time to be holding funds for a punch list.
Go ahead.
Let's speak to it. There are several items that are related to the construction of the public safety building. This is part of, that $15,000 is part of the contract. That is the final payment to the contractor that we have continued to withhold until they get the problems resolved that have been identified. Most of them have to do with the HVAC for mostly the third floor, but there have been several other things. We're continuing to work with the contractor and also the design engineers to try to get to a resolution of what's causing the problem. And, and they have funded these, but there have been many studies that have been done on the balance of the system, and that clearly, I think everyone agrees, that there's something that needs to be corrected, but we have not gotten it corrected. Part of the delay has to do with the challenge to the system mostly occurs during the peak summertime. And so, you know, we, we don't know if it's been corrected until it gets challenged when it gets really hot. So, you know, we'll be fine so long as temperatures are moderate, but we, we have to check it mostly when, when it's hot. So that's $15,000 that is owed to the contractor that we have withheld until they get these issues resolved.
You think that could be, situation be reconciled in the next 12 months?
I would like to think so, but, you know, I don't know for sure. We certainly would like.
We thought so last year.
Yeah. We would like for it to be reconciled because we don't want to experience the problems in the building, and also because it is quite a bit of work for us. A lot of it has fallen on Chief Graham and some, Chief Buchanan and myself, to constantly be getting these meetings set up and getting the system evaluated, evaluating what they're doing. But the bottom line is, we don't want to release the money until they get it right.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Let's move on to public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met 5 o'clock Tuesday, February 7th. All members were in attendance. Under Old Business, we talked about the status of the improvements on the rental placards for the 911 calls. As you know, we're going to consolidated dispatch, and we want to make sure that the placards in the rental houses have a good, easily identifiable address on them, because some folks only have cell phones. They don't have a telephone that's going to pop up, as you will, in the 911 system. So the staff is working on that. The mayor did a very good job of going over the updates to the improvements to the Isle Palms Connector, which we said, well, we don't know if that's really an improvement or not. In addition to what the mayor was saying, one of our primary concerns was that of the many different plans they gave us, they were trying to take away space from the median. And we feel that is very important to the safety of residents of the island, be able to get an emergency vehicle on and off during busy times. Talked about the sales tax funding and CTC requests, which the mayor also did a good job of. I'm glad Ways and Means goes before me. We reviewed the capital budget plans and long-range capital plans for the fire and Talked about consolidated dispatch, which at this point, it looks like it's probably about 18 months away. And the city administrator, city treasurer, have started a separate spreadsheet to show what costs are going to be and the city's going to have involving that transition. Because it's going to be about a one-year period of time, and we're going to probably have some, some gaps that we want to make sure are filled in, so we're trying to anticipate what those needs will be and budget accordingly if necessary. Also in that, the East Cooper communities would like to change to that consolidated dispatch at the same time, and at the same time would not be during the middle of the peak season. So be during an off-season time. Going to the departmental reports, highlights, Fire Department, the personnel responded to 35 calls, 20 of which were EMS calls in January, and we have a new full-time firefighter. In the Police Department, we had an incident of a fraudulent vacation rental. Folks get on the internet, and evidently someone was trying to rent a vacation home that was not theirs. They got some good leads on that. Dispatchers responded to 3,758 calls. 3,120 were for the Police Department. 97 citations were written from the 315 traffic stops. You've met the two officers that completed the police academy. There were five noise complaints, and one citation was written. Under miscellaneous, there will be an MS Challenge Walk, which is going to be Sunday, March 4th. That has a very low impact on the island. You might see some a little bit on the far end of Waterway. And the next meeting is scheduled for 5 o'clock Thursday, March 15th, in the conference room. Are there any questions?
Questions for public safety? Very good.
Before we get off public safety, I just want to make a mention for the record and also for the public. The South Carolina Department of Transportation has installed the signs that indicate that you cannot park on the intersections so that there's good line of sight on Palm Boulevard. So everyone should be mindful of that and have your guests be mindful of it so that, so that there's not any mistake in, because some of the places, people have been parking in the past.
Those signs went up today. They met their obligation. They said that by the end of February. We were nervous. But they're up between 22nd and 34th. And I anticipate it will have a very positive impact on the parking there. We'll see. We'll see what happens with the summer. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I swear I read it somewhere in the, in the minutes, and maybe it was in Public Safety, but there was a discussion about the cameras in the, on the front beach? Is it the cameras?
Not the, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Emergency funds.
The phones, emergency phones. Where did I read that? I've been searching. Was it in Public Safety?
It was, I was just going to say, I think it was, it was in one of the budget meetings, and it came up about whether or not that service needed to continue since so many people carry cell phones. And I believe Councilman Loftus asked the question in one of the meetings, was what the frequency of use of those were, because, you know, we, we pay to keep that service up, and that maybe if it was not used very often, that it wasn't necessary to continue. So that's, that's where you heard that discussion.
Okay.
And the comment was made, that the cameras are on the same. Same suppose. So if we give up one, do we give up both, or do we just keep the cameras? So it's an open item.
No decisions.
Thank you.
Okay. Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee met Thursday, February 9th, 4 o'clock. I was excused from there. I was in Greenville for a South Carolina State Swim Meet, in which one of my children qualified for 10 events and medaled in four of them.
You're going to tell us all?
Times, eight times.
Anyhow, he did really well. We're very proud of him, right? But, and we went through and discussed the department report. Director Pitts reported that more in-house work had been done in January, some spring cleaning. Garbage is up for the month, and he went on to explain that the move to paper bags, there's one thing, people have to realize, that Charleston County is no longer accepting plastic bags, that all yard, for yard debris, and all yard debris needs to be in paper bags. So, that's not my, those plastic bags in front of my driveway are my neighbor's. So, I told them. But anyhow, Director Pitts explained that the move, the plastic, the paper bags or plastic yard containers for yard debris meant that more debris is now going to lead Bee's Ferry and last to 4B Inc., which would, might see an increase in fuel, so because of that drive. Under Old Business, we talked about drainage projects. We had discussion of the easement from, for the 53rd to 57th Avenue drainage. While we do have a temporary easement through Wild Dunes, they are going through some renovation. So until that is done, we will not officially receive our permanent easement there. And we do have some funds left over from that project, and those funds will be used on the movement of that easement if we need to, or when we need to. We also had an update on the reimbursement for our 21st Avenue drainage from NPDES. The administrator announced that the city had received $5,500 reimbursement from Charleston County for our 21st Avenue drainage project, which is good. And a number of, we receive, a number of our drainage projects are offset by the county. We also went on and, as the mayor had mentioned earlier, the recommendation of a sole-source contract to Civil Site Environmental for continued drainage projects. He also mentioned the update of the paving of the compactor in the municipal lot. We also discussed the capital budget for next fiscal year and the long-range capital plan. As with all departments, that is a work in progress, and we'll continue to fine-tune those expenditures, as well as the prioritization of projects greater than $250,000. We also discussed the annual transportation sales tax funding, as the mayor had alluded to earlier today, and the priorities for that. Not much else was going on. Reporting a meeting with Charleston County on the NPDES. There is an account assigned to that, so now we have a better understanding of what monies are allocated for the city and how much we have available to use. Under miscellaneous business, the director had announced that the annual household hazardous waste collection would be held on Saturday, but it's been moved.
Yes. I was hoping you'd gotten that one.
Correct. And it has been, I don't, I can't remember what the next date is, though.
May 5th.
May 5th.
May 5th.
Okay. Yeah.
And not at the red.
Correct. It would be held, yeah. The hazardous waste collection will be May 5th in the city lots, as it normally is. Our next meeting day is March 7th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Any questions for Public Works?
Mayor.
Please.
Hazardous waste being paint, oils, anything left over in our yards or underneath the houses to get rid of for residents of Isle Palms.
Computers, electronics. Batteries. Cartridges. But in addition, we bring a shredder in. Is that still a thing? And so if you have confidential information that you don't want to share with your neighbor, you know, and you don't want to put a page into the time to your own shredder, bring it down here. They chew it up right before your eyes, and it's magic.
I've got a ton for you then.
Get there early.
But.
There's a limit.
Well, I can't, I can't remember the tonnage that we had shredded last time. I mean, it's, I mean, it's like 12 ton or 30, I mean, it fills up this big trunk. So, the island is, that's well-served by getting the stuff off of, off of the island and out of, out of harm's way, if you will.
Are tires included in this? Nobody wants tires.
Nobody.
Moving on. Recreation, please.
Yes. The Rec Committee met on February 8th. January, as always, is a busy time at the rec. Just a few examples, babysitting class for nine young people, as well as nine youngsters in ballet classes. Everything available from evening yoga and zumba, to nine women attending the gather, knit, and stitch at the rec in the morning. Taekwondo classes continue, have 40 participants. Coming up in March will be the middle school dance, which will be Friday, March 9th. Some craft projects for the holidays. St. Patty's crafts will be March 15th at 4:00. Children will decorate St. Patrick's Day bags, and once that's done, they'll hunt for gold. We're going to send the city treasurer over. That'll work. Then we have an excellent craft, egg-sulent craft, let me say that again, will take place on Friday, the 23rd. Children will get to decorate and dye Easter eggs. There's still time for the citizens to enter the photography contest. The deadline for submissions is March 30th. We have a new table tennis league, which is starting this coming week. Happy to report that the rec department will have an additional ping pong table for time for the league, which is great news for us ping pong players. Due to the high demand for slots, have been added, so I believe there's no waiting list anymore. So we're looking forward to Jimmy Carroll getting on, getting on his paddle.
The gauntlet has been drawn.
The first pitch half rubber tournament will be held March 24th, Saturday. This past weekend, if you had, if you missed it, it was Doggy Day at the rec. 80 dogs took part in the 11 dog competitions. Please go to the city website. Norma Jean's put pictures on of all the little cuties, so you can take a look. Dr. Biascochea did more than 131 vaccinations, and 106 dogs got their licenses. So a big, big, big day. Some statistics for the month. The Monday through Friday, from the front desk, we had 498 people using the cardio room. We took 462 phone calls, 485 walk-ins, open gym participants, residents 109 and non-residents 160. So if there's any doubt that the rec center is busy, put that aside. We've begun work on our budget, and of course, that's ongoing. Next meeting will be March 14th at 4:00, and the city council changes.
Thank you very much. Questions for rec? Timmy's already using training. All right. Let's go on for Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met at 9 o'clock Thursday, February 2nd. All members were in attendance. The first item that we talked about was the budgets, the capital budgets, long-range capital plans for general government and building department. In the general government area, we talked about needing some new signs, or putting up some signs for our municipal, municipal livability courts and, because guests that come to the island really don't know, get kind of confused of where they're going. Reconfiguration of the rear entrance to the city hall. We put that in for about $30,000. This reconfiguration has been on the budget for several years, with a planned improvement of 1207 Palm Boulevard. Timing is right to proceed with this addition. We felt that in hand. Replace the. Replace the wooden welcome sign on the connector. Replace the City Hall computer service and backup, which is on a three-year replacement. General government special projects, underground utility lines for seventy-five thousand, which is in conjunction with S E and G when they do their, their work. Implement an on-street parking management. This program is now still in progress, and we just put this in as a placeholder for thirty thousand. The interesting one was, though, is a lot of discussion on the accepting credit cards and converting for, the city to be able to accept credit cards for traffic tickets and wherever else it might come along, that people now have to pay cash. Councilman Stone did express a belief that credit card information was going to be quite Assistant indicated the staff would do additional research to get more accurate information on the, on the credit cards. General government facility maintenance. We're looking at a total general government capital budget for the fiscal year thirteen at two-hundred-and-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars total. That's for the maintenance facilities and general government. Building Department, we're looking at some computers there for twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and replace the document folding ceiling printer. General Building Department and Maintenance Facilities rehabilitation and improvement of twelve oh seven and thirteen oh one building for fifty-one thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. The fiscal year budget includes fifteen thousand dollars for improvements to twelve oh seven Palm Boulevard, and fifteen thousand for rehabilitation of thirteen oh one Boulevard to convert to rental properties. Prioritization of projects of over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. One that came up for discussion was the show management. Has been issued and will be funded by the escrow of the two thousand and eight beach restoration project. In addition, it was reported that the engineers have indicated another significant project may be needed in two thousand and thirteen. That doesn't sound good. And that would be, would be as large as, they thought it would be about as large as the two thousand and eight project. Along these lines, the show management is currently being addressed. On the subject of funding, the two thousand and twelve show management project will delete the balance of the escrow in the two thousand and eight renovation project, and therefore any future projects do not have funding sources identified. Then we talked about using, getting, using some green funds for the, doing walkovers, which are in pretty sad shape and need replacement, and we thought that maybe we could, see if we could use some of the green funds for that. And, let's see, the monetary goal of disaster recovery fund is three million dollars. At December, December two thousand and eleven, the fund balance was eighteen hundred, one million eight hundred thousand. On the topic of island drainage, Fifty-third and Fifty-seventh Avenue Drainage Project has been completed, and the next phase would be Forty-sixth through Fifty-seventh Avenues. Discussion for future projects may be discussed, and we don't, we did talk about the possibility of a parking garage, front beach with retail space. Other items that we talked about were Marina Dock relocation replacement. Public Works is talking about reconfiguring the department space. Discussion on related future policies and social media. The thing that I found very, one of the questions that was asked there is, how do we, are we looking at some of the more modern Twitters and those kinds of things to expand it? And one question came up as far as the current system, which is the cable system. How many people really check into the system today? And I was surprised, it's about a hundred people usually view the council meetings on the website. Our next meeting, then, is going to be Tuesday, March the thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, at the City Hall conference room. And the last item is, the announcement this week, state's winners in the general government is Marie Copeland. Congratulations, Mary. Fire is Dana Burnett. Police is Tracy Waldron. Public Works is Joseph Washington.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Your question? Would you say fifteen thousand dollars for renovations to twelve oh seven Palm Boulevard was approved by the committee?
No.
No?
No. You're disgusted.
This is, this is, this is our first initial discussion on the budget. Okay.
That's an item on the wish list.
So it wasn't taken off?
No. We haven't gotten that far yet.
I got it. I understand.
We subsequently reviewed it at which it means.
Is there a detail on what that's going to purchase? Renovations on this building?
I don't, not that I'm aware of.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Did we just renovate this building?
Yeah. Let me, let me see if I can clarify a little bit of the discussion. In the, in the budget year that we're in now, there is a line item for fifteen thousand dollars, that, that at the time that we built the budget, the purpose of that fifteen thousand dollars was to renovate thirteen oh one Palm Boulevard, to be able to lease it.
Right.
Subsequent to that, through investigative analysis, it was determined that the building was not in good enough shape and it would take too much money to be able to renovate it, to make it leasable. And so that money was redirected towards the whole demolition and reconfiguration of the site for parking. Likewise, there is money in this year's budget, the year that we're currently in, for some modifications to the parking lot here. And what, what we have been working towards is combining those into one effort. So, and that's a project that will, we believe, may span to the budget year that we're in now, and the upcoming budget, so it would be necessary to rebudget money, because we might not get finished by the end of this fiscal year. You will see a comprehensive analysis, project worksheet, of all of the elements of the things that we would anticipate your consideration of doing with those. Right now, what's going on is Kelly Messier is doing a land plan to determine what the best configuration of the property would be over there for adding the parking, and then also looking at an improved ingress and egress for the garbage apparatus, because currently they are entering their site off of Palm Boulevard right after the stoplight. So that's, that is the money to which he was referring, is the discussion of what was, what is in this year's budget, and then we have rebudgeted in next year, just because at this point in time, in the budget process, we don't know how far we'll get before we, you know, move into the next fiscal years. You know, the asbestos removal has occurred at thirteen oh one Palm. We are waiting for the demolition to go forward, so we've gotta get the site cleared before we can proceed.
I understand all of the thirteen oh one, all that, I totally understand, but I'm misinterpreting something, kind of like there's an additional fifteen thousand for this site. Is that not true?
That is.
I know, I understand. Everything's going on over there.
Right. That is in the current year.
I understand.
That we're in now.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with the structure?
Right.
Only has to do with parking.
The parking lot.
Out here.
The parking stops, some of them are all broken up and have the rebar sticking out of them, and because there's only one ingress in and out of this site, what has happened is that, that people have made their own to go through, and so the idea is to level it, make distinct ingress and egresses, and replace parking stops that are worn out and dangerous.
Okay. Good. So I can tell people it's not renovation to the building?
No, no. No structure.
To the apartment, because that's what it reads, it's the building.
This is just the site.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Nothing further for Personnel. Let's move on to Real Property, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property met on February sixth at five p.m. All members of the committee were present. Started off as a show management program. Steve Trainum gave a presentation of the show, the movement of the, where we're doing the project, and what's causing it, and a little bit of historical history of that. It was a very informative presentation, and that same presentation was actually given to Wild Dunes Community Association Annual Meeting. Linda already said the great news. We've been waiting for the shoe to drop, and the shoe has dropped, and we'll start moving sand very quickly. Next project was the dredging, the Marina. That project is in progress. We've had to move some pilings around, and actually recently had to move some docks around because of, able to get in there because of electrical lines supplying electricity from South Carolina Electric and Gas to Goat Island. That project is moving along, and we expect that to be completed by April tenth. Next, we, it was discussion of twenty-seven, of, you know, basically City Hall and the old Building Department of what's being done with that property, what's the most cost-effective way to manage, you know, create a parking lot, and create additional parking for City We have, it's also discussed in Ways and Means, we've decided to, there was a definite need to put a concrete pad to allow businesses on front beach to get rid of their garbage. The surface was very porous and not able to root a cord over. I wanna compliment Director Pitts for getting us a better price than the five thousand quoted, and we were able to get that for thirty-nine hundred dollars. Under new business, discussed all the things every other committee has been going through in different projects.
It's not a given.
Lot of headaches and everything. As far as the Marina, we have one tenant passed due. Administrator Tucker has been aggressively staying on top of our tenants to make sure they are paying their bills on a timely manner, and taking action if that does not happen. Discussion was also in the projects over a quarter of a million dollars. And lastly, Councilman Stone made a request that the county come and send a representative and give a presentation to the City Council and the community about green space funds, how we can or cannot use those funds, and hopefully, we're gonna have a representative from the county basically update us and tell us what opportunities we have with that. And, I mean, next meeting is set for March thirteenth at five p.m. in the City Hall conference room.
Very good. Any questions for Real Property? The dredging work continues. They're busting through some hard material apparently out there, but they're getting on with it, so that's going well. Reports of boards and commissions. We had no meetings with the Accommodation and Tax Board of Zoning Appeals. You have the minutes. You have the minutes of February eighth from the Planning Commission. We don't have the minutes at this point, but we did have a joint meeting between Council and the Planning Commission for the subject of parking. That was well-attended and well-discussed, and each committee of council now has some action items to follow up on, to see if any of those recommendations from the Planning Commission can be implemented. Almost nothing can be done immediately. The only thing we could do immediately, and we've already done so today, is signs are up along the intersections, along the avenues from Twenty-second through Thirty-fourth Avenue. Improving the line of sight, keeping people back from the corners, so we'll see how that transmits through the summer. Can people read the signs and follow? If not, we take action accordingly.
Has, have you followed up with S C D O T and the pictures that you sent? Did you send them via mail, and did they receive them, or?
Yes, sir. In fact, I got that communication today. Councilmember Buchanan, when he was at Greenville, noted some things that the city of Greenville has implemented in terms of painting signs, actually, on the streets. The idea being for people who might come over here to go to the beach, that are totally unfamiliar with the island, you know, that being much more obvious where the, you know, what lane to get in and where to go from all directions for the public parking. I sent copies of the pictures that he took to D O T inquiring about whether or not the roads that they were on were D O T roads, and whether or not we could do something similar over here. And I got a set of, I got a response today with a set of guidelines attached that are D O T guidelines, and I've not had a chance to read them, but I guess the short answer is, it might not be out of the question to, to come up with some sort of hybrid version, but we would need to go through the permitting process, and we would probably need some guidance from some transportation people on the permitting process to make sure that we're within those guidelines. But we have gotten a response.
It's quicker, first of all, it's quicker than we normally get the response from D O T. They didn't say yes or no.
Right.
But, you know, they gave us a stack and said, figure it out yourself. I said, right, figure it out.
Michael.
Mayor, while on the subject of parking, is there a schedule when the white line will start showing up again? That was warmly received by residents and visitors alike.
We haven't talked about it, but I'm.
We haven't talked about it. I would think that the logical thing to do would be for that to be consistent with when the meters, when we start the meters, which is usually around St. Patrick's Day.
Couple weeks.
Okay. Well, I'm just thinking, you know, weather's getting nice now, and let's keep people safe.
Okay. Very good. Moving on, no other reports. I have no miscellaneous business. You've heard all the good news that we can carry, haven't they? Anything else to be brought before Council? Our next meeting is March twenty-seventh at seven o'clock. Be here or be square, or whatever they say. All right. We're adjourned.
Move, Peter.
I can move you after this.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Already begun.
All right. You're gonna get it under an hour, boss.
Yeah. That's fine. We'll have to talk.
Have to talk.